If I can get a motion to approve the treasures report, please.
So move.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call? Roll call, please.
Alderman Peterson.
Yes.
Slavin.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes.
Betterman.
Yes.
Fiore.
Yes.
Motion passes. Clerk's report, nothing this evening, and I must thank Candy, she did a wonderful job of, Mr. Batucci's beating, thank you very much. Um, let's see here. Um, unfinished business, we have none this evening, we go to 12, which is new business, 12.1, an introduction to, on the Highland Park, Highwood Legal Aid Clinic. Karen Davidman and Catherine Vandenburgh. Please, yeah, put your name, all that good stuff, so it's in the record. I tell you, no address, but you can give the address of the, um.
Hi, I'm Karen Davidman.
I'm Catherine Vandenburgh.
And first, thank you for inviting us to speak tonight. Second, it's great to be back in Highwood. I worked for many years down the road for State Rep Karen May, and I was here every day. And I got a notice, just by the way, from the city, Village of Glencoe, they wanted to improve their farmer's market. They canceled it this year, and they asked for comments, and my comment was, you should go look to Highwood, because they have mastered that it is the still, I think, the best farmer's market, and I hope that Glencoe steals it from you.
They can try.
Yes, so we were at 1830 Green Bay Road in Highland Park. We opened up officially on May 1st, and we are created to work out of a, out of a study that assessed the needs of the community. They found the need for help with legal assistance with immigration, housing, and domestic violence. And that's the boundaries of what we're doing right now. And we created some great coalitions with existing groups so that we would have really good outreach into the community. Some of you may have gotten a letter to invite you onto the advisory council, but the electeds were not able to be on that, so I apologize if you got that email. But we're working with Alicia de la Cruz and Open Communities to have outreach in terms of housing, housing issues, and getting people and clients to come to us and know that we're there. We're working with a safe place to have referrals for domestic violence, and have people know to come to us if they have an emergency order protection and they need to go back for plenary to call us. And for immigration, we were, we started working with ASSIS, and we're still working with them. They have an ongoing program, but we're a volunteer organization. I'm the executive director, so I'm a staff person, but we've made up a volunteer attorneys and volunteer people to, to help the clinic run. One of the attorneys stepped forward and said, I'm an immigration attorney, I'd like to run your immigration program. And so now we're able to take that in-house to do citizenship and naturalization and other issues that are going to come before us. So we have a higher income requirement, and then you would find a Prairie State Legal Services so that we could serve more people. And we are getting, we're getting clients from Highland Park and Highwood equally. And we need the support of the City of Highwood to get the word out about us, so that people know they can call us if they have a legal issue. Some people still don't know we exist, and we are not taking out ads, we're kind of running it on a donation basis. So we are not doing that, we are spreading word, word of mouth. So if you are aware of situations and people that need help, please refer them to us. I was going to bring brochures, and I did not, so I will get them over to you, Charlie. Okay?
An example, and we don't have a lot of examples because we've only been in business for two months. But I'm going to be going to DuPage County in a couple of days to get a dismissal of a lawsuit that was started against a young lady who lives here in Highwood, has lived in Highwood all of her life. And she has exactly the same name of somebody in Addison, Illinois, who owned a vicious dog that bit a mailman. So she was, she was sued, she was served with papers. We were able to represent her and make sure that she doesn't get a judgment against her. So that's one thing that we've done already.
Because if she were not to show up, would they put a judgment against her?
If she would not have shown up, it would have been a default, even though she would be provably, you know, not the person, it would have hung around her, her neck for a long time. We have done one DACA application. DACA is the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals. These are for kids that came to the United States with parents when they were young. And so it wasn't them that came in out of their own will. So we have one young lady, I think she lives here in Highwood, that we already have pending now before the US CIS. Because we're not funded by federal money, we can take undocumented people as clients. And so we can work with undocumented young people. And when the DACA program for parents opens up, then we'll be able to work with them as well. With domestic violence, we've had a case this week that we've been able to refer to some experts on domestic violence, a very interesting case. And then with housing, Open Communities had cases lined up with us, for us on, on May 1st, and we've been working from day one with people, particularly in Highwood, who have troubled relationships with their landlords, and landlords that simply don't apply, don't obey the law. And so we've got quite a few cases that are just pending, and they will be pending as, as long as they need to be. So we've already made somewhat of an impact, we hope that we can do more.
Anything the city can do on those landlords that aren't obeying the law? Or do we leave it up?
Well, you know, we talked to Scott, we, we don't know, we'll, we're, we're going to have to see what we can do. You know, there's a, there's a presumption that people have the capacity to contract. So if a landlord gives a contract, a lease to someone who doesn't know what it includes, can't read it, and so forth, and they sign it anyway, then even if it's a bad lease, we're, we'll, it's there. There's no, there's no way that we can impose a standard lease. But I think what we can do is let landlords know that we're here, and that we're not going to allow bad practices to occur. And then if they, if people are asked to pay for utilities that they aren't required to pay for, or if they haven't got their security deposit back, those are things that we'll be doing.
How are you funded? Oh, I'm sorry, go on.
A question?
You had mentioned the market. You know, I, I would highly suggest, in terms of visibility, come to one of the ones they want.
What's it going to do?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely, that is a fabulous.
I know a guy that has a booth there.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Wears a white shirt.
Wears a white shirt, I'm the only farmer at the farmer market. But you're more than welcome to.
Oh, that would be great, yeah.
Safe space by me.
I. That is such a perfect idea, thank you.
Give you my contact, and you're more than welcome to.
Yeah.
Share the space with us, and if anybody has a problem with it, I'll deal with it.
Okay, that's a great idea.
Thank you so much.
Karen, what is the phone number?
It's eight four, eight four seven, nine two six, one eight six seven.
And in case you didn't recognize the address, it's the Firehouse, it's the Firehouse Youth Center. We have the second floor, we have a corner office, and we're just now starting to expand into a space that's next to it. So we'll be, we'll be there until they kick us out. We don't know what's going to happen with that building. We were originally told we could have it till August 31st, but it looks like we've got it for at least another year, so.
I want to go back to housing again. We thought, everybody thought that immigration was going to be our big issue, and we're actually having more housing cases. But our first housing case that Open Communities brought to us was a wrongful eviction. And eviction was served on somebody not living there, and it would have ruined this person's reputation. And we were able to get that overturned from a Friday night email to a Saturday lawyer coming in to meet with clients, to appearing in court on Wednesday to have it overturned.
Oh, on Monday, on Monday morning at nine o'clock, he was in, he was in court. And, and the eviction, which was scheduled for Monday at 10 o'clock, didn't occur.
So.
Because the person didn't live there?
The person didn't live there, it was served on their name, and the people who did live there had other issues. So he was able to take care of both of these.
For his own name, yeah.
Uh huh, and the, getting the security deposit back. Most people cannot afford to hire an attorney for a thousand dollar security deposit back, they would lose half the money, but they can't move on from it. So we have a real place to serve and help residents, and, and we are there, and, and this is a really big issue. People are afraid to sometimes complain, complain about village ordinances, complain about their landlords. And we have already made our mark here, and people are going to know that we are here to help them and to provide legal representation when we can for those issues. So we're happy to be of help, and if you hear things, please reach out to us.
You know that, right? We've got two volunteers, where we go?
And Catherine didn't, Catherine is the managing attorney, and she has spent her career, we didn't really introduce ourselves, Catherine has spent her career creating 501(c)(3)'s and working with not-for-profits. So when people say, how did you get this started? Catherine brought all of her years of expertise and was able to do it with such an ease you would not have believed it possible. That's how we got created, and I had a little legislative experience in helping constituents and clients. So it was a perfect fit for both of us.
How, how are you funded?
By donations. We had a drive on May 1st to, with the day that we opened, to get founding sponsors. And we approached a lot of the law firms and the Highland Park Community Foundation, and we got seven founding sponsors. We also have some requests out there to a few more places that are still trying to work that out. And then we are going to be going and appealing to people in town and getting letters out and solicitation letters. It's all, we're 501(c)(3), and it's all tax deductible. Plus, that's the, the funding, and we're going to go for some, some grants for foundations, and maybe some larger, like Rotary and things will apply for Rotary again, but we are not going for federal money, because federal grants, you have to have at the, the income level that they say, and you have to prove the income level and get their tax returns, and you have to prove where they came from, and what is their race and everything. They want all this data, and we don't want to do that. We want to help the people who need help, and, you know, that's, this is how we're going to do it.
How rigid are those, those legal areas, immigration, housing, and domestic violence? I know you alluded to a sort of kind of collection.
Yeah, I know, we've, um, we've, we've been challenged because we want to try to keep it within bounds of the three areas that we were started as our target areas. But what we find is that there's just such a wide variety of things that happen. We get calls on Medicare and Medicaid, we get calls on somebody lost, lost their house to foreclosure. There's just all kinds of things. We're going to have to be careful about extending ourselves too far, because we could become inundated with people. For example, if we said we would do family law, that meaning that we would do divorces or child support, we can't do that. We just, we just don't have the capacity. But if somebody is in a domestic violence situation, and they've gone to the court to get an emergency order, we can work with that person to get the plenary order, which will be in place for the next two years, and make sure that they have a reasonable setup. So that's the kind of thing that we're going to do with that. But the, the person that came to us just this week, or was it last week, I don't even know, this is Tuesday, right?
Yes.
The one that came to us last week had an emergency order protection, it was rolled over, rolled over, rolled over, then they went through a divorce, and the order, the emergency order was dissolved. And, and yet the perpetrator kept pestering, harassing, making life miserable. And so the question was, can we do anything for that person? And we were able to get them connected with somebody who was more in tune with Domestic Violence Court as to how they will look at this and see if whether there's anything that they can do. So, you know, that's what we're going to do, is just try to solve problems.
We have the discretion to see what we can do if it falls closely. You know, we're not rigidly defined, and we've already added things. And we, we want to grow the, the clinic to serve the people's needs, but one of them was like interpretation of documents. And that's kind of pretty clear, you know, you don't have to call a $400-an-hour attorney to say, what does this quick claim deed say? Or what does this, you know, this judgment, are they going to come after me if, or instead of my deceased husband? We can kind of read those documents and provide that information. So as we grow, we're going to publicize it, we have a website. We have, right now, we're open on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from nine to 12, sometimes longer. We're going to have, once a month, we're open on Saturdays from nine to 12, and we'll have an evening hour at least once a month and try to do that more regularly. We just have to have more than one person if we're going to be open at night, so we're going to get that into place. And one of the things we're really looking forward to in the fall, working with Open Communities, who is a wonderful partner to us, is have a housing workshop where we are going to bring in housing specialists and attorneys, and have a forum to discuss tenants' rights, and how to, how to complain, how to keep track of your records, what you need to keep track of, what you need to do, and really give some legal advice and good sense advice to tenants.
Cool. Well, so you guys off to rip-roaring start with only two months, very impressive.
Yeah, it was amazing how quickly it started. But, you know. Yeah.
I'm not sure if that's good or bad, but that's the case. That's right. Well, thank you very much for coming in this evening. We appreciate it. And also, do we have a, do we have like something to put up at the front window? Yeah, it'd be nice to have, do you need a lawyer, you know, please feel free to reach out to. In Spanish, I mean, Spanish, right?
Tomorrow night, right?
Yeah, tomorrow night, by the way, there's room.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Good night. Night. Oh, thank you, it was nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Tomorrow. Is it buttered? No, it's a machine-made.
I can't believe it's not buttered.
All right. 12.2, consideration of a motion adopting fiscal year 2016 budget.
You have a motion?
We have a motion by Alderman Fiore, do I have a second? Oh. It's appropriation. All right, so we have an amendment.
Okay.
Can we retract?
Yeah, retract.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just wanted to ensure that we included the 911 emergency fund.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Yeah, so the revenue and expense in the budget would be $85,100. And for the appropriation with the 10%, that'd be $93,610 for that.
Okay, so right now, just stay right there, because we'll have you alter it. So we're going to look at and make a motion adopting the fiscal year 2016 budget to include the E911 of revenue and expenses of $85,000?
$85,100.
$85,100. Might get them to move?
Second.
Motion and a second. Consider of a motion, is it all in favor?
It's all in.
Is it? Okay, roll call, please.
Sorry. Alderman, Betterman.
Yes.
Fiore.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Slavin.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes.
Okay. 12.3 is consideration of an annual appropriations ordinance for the City of Highwood for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2015, and ending April 30th, 2016. We need to amend that to read that E914 should be appropriated for.
Budgeted figure in the appropriation ordinance would be $85,100, and the appropriation amount would be $93,610, amending the total budget to $13,832,490, and the appropriations total to $15,215,738.
Okay.
We also need to add, or amend the estimate of revenues to include the 911 revenues as well, is it in there?
We would also need to amend that as well.
The estimated revenues attached to the appropriation ordinance would need to include that $85,100 as well. So that would be part of the amended motion.
Didn't we need to also amend April 30th, 2016, not 2015?
Yeah, that was made in.
Oh, was it? Okay, I didn't know, I didn't hear that. So the appropriation dollar amount would be $93,610, correct? Not the budgeted, the appropriated?
Correct, the appropriated amount.
Which is what we're looking at, and the appropriated new total will be $15,215,738?
$15,215,738, correct.
Okay, and those are the numbers that will attach to?
And the estimated revenue amount in the ordinance would read $13,416,410.
What is the amount?
Would include the $85,100.
Thank you.
Just a note to the public here, there was a public hearing held at 6:00 PM in accordance with the published notice, and the law does allow for an amendment to the appropriation ordinance after a public hearing but before final action is taken. That's what we would be doing.
Okay, so what we're adding are the two line items, budgeted in revenue and expense and appropriation revenue and expense, correct?
That's what we just did. Correct.
Okay. You can motion with those numbers then, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman, Fiore.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Slavin.
Yes.
Betterman.
Yes.
Grace.
Okay. Thank you very much. 12.4 is consideration of an ordinance on a salary compensation for the City of Highwood for fiscal year 2016 budget year. If I get a motion to approve that, please. I'll make that motion.
Second.
This was a second. Any discussion? It's pretty straightforward. Roll call, please.
Alderman, Betterman.
Yes.
Fiore.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Slavin.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes.
Uh, next item is 12.5, consideration of a motion accepting engagement letter with Bernardi Securities, Inc. to act as the underwriter for the General Obligation Bond Series 2015 for the City of Highwood to pay for our capital improvement program. If I get a motion to approve that, please. So move?
Second.
Motion Alderman, Betterman was the second. And if I'm not mistaken, we're looking at a tax increase of, was it $120, $110? We had that a while back, correct? Or $307,000 home?
It was $170 to $180.
Okay.
After the estimates. For next year's tax.
Not this year, but next year. Okay. Motion and second, roll call, please.
Alderman, Grace.
Yes.
Betterman.
Yes.
Fiore.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Slavin.
Yes.
Okay. 12.6 is consideration of a motion approving Chapman Cutler as the bond and disclosure counsel for the Highwoods' proposed bond issuance. This will be our legal counsel, legal representation. If I get a motion for that firm, please. I'll make that motion. Second. Thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Alderman, Peterson.
Yes.
Slavin.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes.
Betterman.
Yes.
Fiore.
Yes.
12.7, consideration of an ordinance updating an adoption, that's an ordinance, isn't it? International Energy Conservation Code from the 2006 to the 2012 edition, and the Illinois Plumbing Code from the 2004 to the 2012 edition. Second. Roll call, please.
Alderman, Slavin.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Fiore.
Yes.
Betterman.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes.
12.9, consideration of an ordinance deleting Section 10-1-4-9 of the Highwood City Code to eliminate amendments to the Energy Conservation Code.
Yeah, we got 12.8, boss.
Darn it, all right, we'll go back to 12.8. Consideration of an ordinance deleting section, I just skipped it, didn't I?
Yes.
My eyes went down one. 10-1-4-9 of the Highwood City Code to eliminate amendments to the Illinois Plumbing Code.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second.
Alderman, Grace was the second, roll call, please.
Alderman, Grace.
Yes.
Betterman.
Yes.
Fiore.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Slavin.
Yes.
12.9, a few of these, don't we? Consideration of an ordinance deleting Section 10-1-4-6 of the Highwood City Code to eliminate amendments to the Energy Conservation Code.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Alderman, Betterman.
Yes.
Fiore.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Slavin.
Yes.
Grace.
12.10, consideration of a motion approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local 700. This is the, the police lieutenant's agreement, effective July 1st, 2015, through June 30th, 2020. Nice job, five-year contract, good for all sides.
Make that motion, second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman, Betterman.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Fiore.
Yes.
Slavin.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes.
Okay. 12.11, consideration of an ordinance amending the Highwood City Code with regard to resale dealers' record-keeping requirements. If I get a motion for this, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Betterman. And this is to make documentation for all resale establishments a little more stringent. Motion, second, roll call, please.
Alderman, Slavin.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes.
Betterman.
Yes.
Fiore.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And finally, or not finally, I shouldn't say that, 12.12. Consideration of a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a 2015 Capital Improvement Plan change orders. If I get a motion for that, please. Thank you.
Second.
All right, let's talk about this one for a second here. Mr. Corin, tell us, what are we changing?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, there are two change orders that were, are on the agenda for approval tonight. The first is taking long-term planning recommendations into account and reducing some items such as a street sweeper and putting sod down to save approximately $100,000. Uh, it also includes additional payments for replacing some valves that needed replacement on Highwood Avenue to properly maintain our water system. The other change order is to add Lockard Lane, High Street, Evolution Avenue, and.
Sard Place.
Sard Place, thank you. To our capital projects paving program, so those roads will be repaved this summer.
At this time, if I'm not mistaken, we do not have a schedule, but it will probably occur over the course of the summer, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we have four more streets we're doing, four, five?
Yippee-ki-yay. Put something already on there. High Street, Evolution.
Oh, Evolution.
To check on the pricing of it.
To check on the pricing of, if we resurface the.
The library.
Library.
The library, utilizing funds that we may get.
We can, we can check on that, but the timing is very unlikely to work out now, because they have to go through both the contract and planning and zoning. So by the time it would be repaved, we're not going to, we're not going to hit the window.
It's also only if that goes, that's only if that goes there.
No, we just look at the money, though.
You use the money, it doesn't matter where you go.
I just say we, okay. So excluding the library lot, we have street changes, reduction in costs, and valves, correct? Those are the three things we're changing so far. Roll, we have motion, second, roll call, please.
Alderman, Grace.
Yes.
Betterman.
Yes.
Fiore.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Slavin.
Yes.
We just agreed to pay for it, now we have changes to pay. Oh, well. 12.3, consideration of a motion, oh, 12.13. 12.13, consideration of a motion authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the IAFF Local 3993 on outstanding legal issues and grievances. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion on this one, you think? Are we? Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion on this one, you think? Are we okay with this? This is a.
I forget what this is. Is this what?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, basically, it's an agreement to, for us to take on three new part-timers, correct? And it's a good faith for both sides here. So I'm glad this actually came to fruition. We hope to work closely with them going forward. Roll call, please.
Alderman Slavin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fury?
Yes.
Fetterman?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
12.14, not ready at this time. 12.15, consideration of a motion approving an agreement with T-Mobile to install flagpole at Monopole at 102 Highwood Avenue. That one is not ready at this time as well. No executive session, no actions coming out of execution, executive session. Motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.